I did hear we got tats in Congress.
There she is.
Looks like it's winter out there.
All right, so it's six thirty and we're called March eighth, twenty twenty-two, study sessions are ordered. Tonight we have three topics, one on a building code update and then two on stuff that we knew. The first topic is timely because I was emailing with Jennifer, I think it was last week or earlier this week, or in the last few days.
Last, yes, last few days.
Because of the Metro Mayor's subcommittee meetings that we are, uh, may we talk about all the good building codes, energy codes of all the municipalities in the area and seeing little to very, very latest, or the oldest codes that we are currently following versus everyone else who's on the Patti team, most people from twenty twenty-one, so what we're talking about, turn it over to Mark to give an intro.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, let's see, we have John Schumacher, our chief building official, Jennifer Hanger, community development director. They're going to give us all overview of the international codes. We don't get to do this too often. And I think there's lots of interesting topics connected to the code these days. I think certainly at the town of Superior is having an interesting conversation around their codes here as they try to rebuild as a result of Marshall fire. So I think this is kind of timely and I'm not sure who's going to lead here, but I'll turn it over to one of you just to kind of kick off this conversation and give us the overview.
I'm going to kick it over to John, but just a quick introduction. So this evening, John is going to tell you a little bit about what the building division does, just to give those of you in the municipal council a little bit of background on that. And then John is UMC and Reed is very excited that we're moving to the twenty twenty-one and will not be at the bottom of the list anymore.
Bulmar is the only municipality that was older than us. They were in two thousand and six, I think.
Whoa, hey, Bulmar.
Yeah. So, so we're going to raise the bar tremendously over the course of this year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John.
Good evening, everybody. As I said, I'm John Schumacher. I'm the chief building official. Just going to talk to you tonight a little bit about what we do in the building division, touch a little bit on the code adoption process, talk about the schedule for that, and then answer any questions that you might have specific to particular codes. So with that, we'll start, talk about a little bit about what we do in the building division. We do a variety of things. We have the permit center, which of course is the central part where we have our contact with our customers, whether that's in person or via telephone. In, in the permit center, we handle a number of different types of permits. We primarily, we work on building permits, but we also, over the recent months, last three or four months, we've picked up parking permits, we issue contractors licenses, we have recently started to handle rental registration, short-term rental licensing. We have about, pre-pandemic, about thirty-five hundred walk-in customers we anticipate. We may not admit it, but we'll get close to that over the next year as we sort of return to the normal. And about forty-five thousand calls every year. Part of that building permit process, we issue about twenty-four hundred permits on average last year. It was just over twenty-four hundred the year before, it was about twenty-one. And then in two thousand and nineteen, we actually issued about twenty-eight hundred permits. We're running around twenty-four hundred a year in the last three years. We have a single plan reviewer and that plan reviewer conducted about a thousand plan reviews last year. We, we have four inspectors. One is primarily electrical and then the other's accommodation inspectors. Those inspectors did about eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty inspections last year. And when you're looking at those numbers, if you have an opportunity to look at prior numbers, it's important to keep in mind that we, since two thousand and nineteen, we made a change in the way we track the number of inspections. We used to, say we do a rough plumbing inspection, that includes drain, waste, vent, water supply, other things like that. We used to do each of those as individual inspections. We now just do a rough plumbing inspection. So looking at that number of eleven thousand permits, or eleven thousand inspections sort of actually are three or four components to a lot of those inspections. So they're, they're more time-consuming inspections and encompass more. We also, since two thousand and nineteen, have started to offer a consultation program where you can offer consultation inspection. Either I or one of the inspectors goes out, meets with the homeowner or property owner, spends some time talking to them about their project, either prior to the project or during the project, and talk a little bit about some sort of audit, some sort of issue that they've encountered and options to try and resolve that. That's, that's something that we found that's very valuable and we're, right now, we're doing about two hundred and fifty, or we anticipate that'll increase. We've already done about fifty of those this year. And a lot of good ones for those as people are starting to make investments in property or contemplate those investments. We also have no permit violation notices. So I guess one of the things I'd like to say about that is typically you'll hear of that as a stop work order, but we also have changed our policy on stop work orders over the past couple of years. We do issue stop work orders, but typically we go out and we leave a notice that says we don't approve that, we need to get a permit, we don't issue a stop work order notice right away like we used to, and we try and work with our customers. So that's why I put it up there as a no permit violation notice is because actually we only, out of those hundred no permit violations, we probably only issue about forty stop work orders. We get compliance from folks just by stopping by, talking to them and saying your project needs a permit and we'd like to work with you on that. We also have recently started to work with code compliance. Code compliance has kind of fallen under the building division temporarily over the past couple of months, really actually since November, so about four months. But so in, in the code compliance realm, we're working with the International Property Maintenance Code, which is one of the codes we will adopt the twenty-one, twenty-one version of. And part of that property maintenance code, we cover weeds and grass violations, snow removal, unlicensed vehicles, uninhabitable unfit structures such as where we have a meth house or something like that, where we have a hoarding situation, and then just general maintenance violations. Sometimes we have properties, we're working with a couple now that are just in disrepair, they haven't, they've been abandoned for a couple of years. And so we work on those also as part of the code compliance under the International Property Maintenance Code. We also work on ULC violations, we work planning on where folks put in a shed that's within the setback that they shouldn't have put in, we want to do that and achieve compliance. Or occasionally we work with people who are operating a short-term rental without a license or some other rental, it's not registered, that's, that's part of what we do under code compliance also. We've recently started to work a little more with issuing municipal summonses on their behalf to help them achieve compliance with some of the issues they're encountering out in the field. And we're also working with the police department on homeless, homelessness, homeless camps and clean up homeless camps and working in coordination with them to try and beat some of that. So that's, that's sort of a general overview of what we do in the building division. What we do varies a little bit every day. We do a little bit of all of that pretty much every day. There are those one-offs, those odd things that we do that are related to code. Any questions about the day-to-day operation in the building division before I start talking a little bit about codes?
This is kind of a crazy question, but I remember when I was on historical preservation board, some of the inspectors didn't understand or know of like the Louthen city guidelines for historic districts. Is that, are they aware that it's, that there's certain things that are, have to be in compliance, that there's, that there's a, what do you call it, a book of codes for them that they've adopted?
They are, and that's one of the things over the last couple of years we've sort of adjusted is, is our review process incorporates especially those properties that are designated historic, the historic preservation will be based on and gets to do a review on all of those. And then she will note any special requirements, any special exemptions. And then there are also some exemptions under the building codes for historic buildings. And so they're aware of that also.
Now, the historical preservation board has a legacy list. Is that tied into the permits so Andrea can let them know that they may be in a historic district or a Littleton Boulevard so that they would consider, is that kind of part of what you do?
It's not part of what I do, but I do believe that that is tied into our GIS program. We have started to identify those properties in a way that notifies Andrea as she, as she does her review.
We just don't have that public yet. So like we don't have the public to be asked about the legacy list, but we do have that on our side.
So, so yeah, it's just a conversation before things get old.
How many people work in code enforcement? If you said that earlier, I apologize.
There's two right now. There is one full-time code enforcement officer and one part-time code compliance administrative assistant. And that's a conversation for council to have later in this process, I think, as we come back to talk about the codes that we're adopting and what council would like to see in terms of activity from code enforcement. Right now, we are primarily reactive. But obviously I'm in the process of putting together an assessment of code compliance that could be shared with council, but it will talk a little bit about how it's done in other jurisdictions where there are hybrid models, proactive, all reactive. And that'll be something for council to kind of make a decision on and talk about and discuss and then make adjustments as necessary, whether that's in staffing or other things, depending on what council chooses to do with that.
Okay. John, do you have some data on ETRACIT and how that's going and has it been a success? It's been implemented maybe, what, three years ago, maybe four?
Well, the process started about three or four years ago. We actually began implementation in June of twenty twenty. And we had a few glitches with that, but we've worked through that and we have gotten all of our residential permits online through ETRACIT. We have most of our commercial permits ready to go and ready to be put into, it's in the test process, so as soon as it goes through the test process, it'll be available to the public. We also have worked on putting contractor licensing into the system that should be in in the next two weeks available to the public. It's just gone into testing this week.
And how do you see that changing the way you guys work or is it just being more accountable to the public, I guess?
I think that right now, the change in the way we work is somewhat minimal because we're still kind of in the training phase for, for the public, right? Some of them have used ETRACIT in other locations, but there are slight differences in each jurisdiction and sort of educating our contractors how to use our system, working, working through some of that right now is actually a little more intensive for us. But long-term, I think that it will reduce our in-person, in-person traffic.
Are we still consulting with, who was the gentleman that helped set that up for us?
So we have Central Square that is our contractor on that.
I think he was a consultant.
Yeah, he was before John came here. I can't remember the gentleman's name. Came out of Parker.
Oh, Gil Ross Miller.
Pardon me?
Gil Ross Miller.
Yeah, that's it, Gil. That's, that's the guy I remember anyways.
I don't think so.
John Harvey, John Harvey was our rep from Central Square and he was.
This is somebody that came in as a consultant to figure out what was going on with the planning commission, what was going on with permits, why everything was dragging through.
Oh, the, the Tipton process.
That was, yeah, I got it.
Tracit came out after that.
Yeah, I thought he helped implement.
He was helping with the processes and kind of identifying that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
As far as ETRACIT, I, you know, I used it last year when I got a building from my bathroom.
You got a customer, you pay for that. Must have been running for mayor.
So I thought it was great.
Other questions about processes and procedure within the building division?
I guess I can do one clarification. So when we talk about code compliance, that is formerly known as code enforcement. So just, so there's no confusion on that.
I have one more.
Listen, which there.
Yes.
How is it going with the short-term rentals? That's kind of new. We just implemented that when, I don't know, six months ago or something. I mean, are you getting many calls about short-term rentals that aren't licensed and do you, how do you deal with it and how's it, what working and?
So a couple of different things on the short-term rental. I would say with code compliance, they, they were the ones that we kind of earmarked as, hey, if we get any complaints, we're going to send you out. I was actually just talking to Jeffrey Valentine today about a short-term rental that doesn't have a license. I would say most of the things that we're finding now are the ones that don't have a license. We actually did sign a contract with Host Compliance. Is it okay if I? And they're actually part of Granicus and now part of Open Cities. And Open Cities, if you recall, is the partner that we're going with, with our website overhaul and our new website. So it's kind of a leg of that. So we have partnered with Host Compliance to help us with the enforcement and identification and also business license collection. So we're in the process of rolling that whole system out.
Okay, so there's a system and they include short-term rentals. So when a, like this short-term rental that doesn't have a license and probably not grandfathered in?
Correct, because it's in a legal one, so.
So they have to go through the legal process of the fine, either cease and desist.
The Tracit to apply and then we would basically say, no, you can't do it.
Oh, so you have, you don't start fining them right away?
So we have found some already.
But are you starting with the penalty process, the fines and the whatever it is?
We have not started the fining process.
Typically, they'd be given a notice to cease and desist the operation of their SDR if they're not licensed or they are not allowed to be operating.
And so has that happened?
We have issued some cease and desists.
Okay. But you haven't gotten to the fine stage. I mean, we want to have teeth in this or?
Sure. Yeah, I mean typically, just like we would with any code violation, we usually give someone a notice saying, hey, you know, please remove this within X amount of days. If they don't, we go back and do a reinspection. If they haven't complied, we'll issue them a summons and then we go through the whole penalty process.
You know what, Mr. Mayor, what I might suggest is at some point staff come back here, maybe this fall after we've had a year kind of putting this ordinance in place and just report out to council. Where are we at with STRs enforcement numbers? So council can get a better feel for that. My guess is that we'll probably over time want to adjust STRs. That's what most cities do, just based on what you learn. So we'll collect some data and report out to council.
We absolutely have folks who've come in, as you know, you know, council made a decision not to have non-owner occupied. We grandfathered some in, but we don't allow for those any longer. So we definitely have had folks contact the city inquiring and once they're found out that they're, you know, that they're not owner occupied, then they get turned down. Had some disappointed folks, as you'd imagine, but.
Thank you.
I don't think so. Go ahead and continue. So a little bit about what we're doing currently with codes before we get into our process description. So right now, as the mayor said, we're kind of on an older version of the codes. The most current version is the twenty twenty-one. We're currently enforcing the twenty twelve international code family. So that's the building code, residential code, plumbing, mechanical, fire, fuel, gas, energy conservation and property maintenance codes. We have an even older version of the international fire code and we have an old version of the electrical code, two thousand and fourteen, and we use the nineteen ninety-seven uniform code for the abatement of dangerous buildings. And I do have to say, so that you know, that is the most recent version of the uniform code of the abatement of dangerous buildings is the ninety-seven. After that, they started to break it up a little bit and include it in the other codes. It's nice to have it as a standalone code because it sets forth some procedures, timelines for dealing with some of these things that we need to deal with, such as meth houses and other things like that. These codes were adopted in two thousand and fourteen and when we adopted them, we adopted them with about, actually about forty-two pages of amendments. And a lot of those amendments added things to the code that made the code a little more restrictive in ways. There were also some things such as our valuation data table was adopted within our code. And so that you understand how that works, the valuation data is published by ICC, the folks who write the codes, and we use that valuation data to determine the value of a project, which then determines the fee. And so we're still using two thousand and nine valuation data. So for example, residential, new, new single-family residential properties, we're valuing at a hundred and two dollars a square foot. We all know that the market is well.
Has changed a little bit.
And so most jurisdictions, you don't adopt that as a part of your amendments. You, you leave that separate. You have language already incorporated into the code that says that you can establish your own building valuation from time to time through a resolution process or really just a publishing process. So we can, we can publish the valuation data that comes out every six months from ICC and use the most current data like other jurisdictions do. So that's a change we'll make in the upcoming processes. We'll take that out of our amendment process so that it's not codified and we're able to update it without having to come back to you every six months and saying, can we, can we make an adjustment to our amendments? The codes come out on a three-year cycle. So the twenty-ones are out. As the mayor said, a lot of folks are using the two thousand and eighteen, many are moving to the twenty-one, some already have. We were working on the two thousand and eighteen codes for amendment and adoption, but decided that the twenty-ones are now out and we were kind of in the midst of our process of the two thousand and eighteen, so we decided we might as well just jump to the twenty-ones and get current with everyone else since we've, it's been a while since we've done this process and do the process in a way that allows us to, moving forward, do it fairly easily on the next code cycle. If we put our amendments together in the right way, it'll make it really easy for us to just sort of transfer those amendments and slightly revise them as necessary as we move to the twenty-fours and kind of get on a three-year cycle like all the other folks around us and, and kind of be in sync with everyone else moving forward so that we have current codes that align with everyone else.
Yeah, I think it's important not to wait eight years to do this.
So as a part of our process, which is what I'm here to talk about a little bit tonight, we will go through the amendment process and we do that internally, send those out, those amendments out to our licensed contractors for comment. And then after we get that first set of comments and have a rough draft, we will take that rough draft of amendments and a rough draft of the adoption process itself to BBOA and to this board. And we will do that hopefully in May is our plan right now. We will come with our first draft. And then we, they'll give you an opportunity to review those for us to talk about that, talk about what the, what the suggestions were from the, the building board of appeals and then take that, that information that comes out of our discussion and that discussion with the building board of appeals and put that into a revised draft and incorporate those things that you've suggested for removal or addition along with the other board. And come back to you with a revised draft in July, hopefully with everything in there that you've, in the way that you've suggested as a part of that initial process. There'll be some more discussion, obviously. If there needs to be any change, we would incorporate those changes. We would go to the building board of appeals for a resolution of support in August with those changes incorporated and then bring final drafts with all of the changes and that resolution of support before September for the first reading and October for the second reading. And then we would be able to adopt the twenty-twenty ones and get on track. We also, as a part of that, we will be adopting all of the codes that we have now, but we, we will update our fire code to the twenty twenty-one. South Metro tonight, the other South Metro that's been working on amendments, we will work with them to make sure that we update the fire code to the, the most current version and it's aligned with suggestions from South Metro. We will be adding the existing building. Um, we will be adding the existing building code. Uh, we have not adopted that before, but the existing building code, in, in previous versions of the regular building code, um, there were, um, provisions for existing buildings, but they were very general. And there were, um, some very wide, um, targets, triggers for upgrades to the new code. Um, the existing building code kind of defines that much better. It has levels of alteration, um, specific requirements that are associated with those levels of alteration. Um, and it works, it works well for cities like ours that have a lot of existing buildings so that, um, we can, we can work with folks in a way that allows them to accomplish what they want to do with their properties in a safe manner, but without it being over the top, without it hitting this trigger where they have to do everything, um, in terms of updates, where they hit the 50% threshold and now they have to fully comply, even the existing portion of the building, um, with, with the new codes. Um, and so the existing building code does a good job of breaking that down in a way that, um, that helps them to make sure that buildings are safe, helps us to make sure the buildings are safe without, um, overreaching at a certain point. And it, and it's very well defined, it's, because right now it's not really defined. 50% is, is a threshold that's in the code now. If you, you, your work gets more than 50% of the value of the property, that triggers full compliance with the new code. But who determines that value, it doesn't say, right? Um, it, uh, you know, what is the current value that you're using for your, to determine your 50%? What's the value of the work that's going in, things like that? The, the existing building code doesn't really base it on that value as much as the type of work that you're doing and how it's affecting, um, the safety and usability of the structure. So that's something that we'll bring before, um, the Building Board of Appeals and before the City Council to look at and, um, explain in, in more depth at that time, exactly how that works and how, why we think that will be much more effective for our customers in, in their remodel projects and the renovation projects.
So example of that, like, you know, going in addition on a house built in the 60s or 70s, the new portion would have to be the current code as long as it didn't touch too much of the existing house. That can stay to the, whatever the code was in the, when the house is built in the 60s and 70s, is that kind of?
That's correct. And it also separates residential from commercial so that, um, you do in some commercial applications, update accessibility, um, or fire protection. Um, but it's not a full trigger to update everything in the existing portion of the structure, just those, those life safety portions. That, um, gives us an opportunity for our buildings to be upgraded in a way that provides for that safety.
The licensed contractors that are kicking this off, are those like Littleton City Staff Contractors?
No, so Littleton City Staff will be doing the amendments and then we will send them out to all registered contractors. Um, those amendments will go to, um, all registered contractors or licensed contractors with the city, which right now is roughly 2,600 people will get an opportunity to comment. Um, and as, as we're able to, um, meet with the public a little more here in the future, um, we hope to be able to have a public meeting, um, rather than just send that out electronically and receive electronic comment or virtual comment.
Those are the stakeholders that actually have to comply.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. And pre-pandemic, we actually started meeting all the contractors, um, when John came on board and then when the pandemic hit, we stopped those meetings.
Yeah, we were typically having quarterly meetings and we will hopefully be able to start that back up this summer and then just have regular quarterly meetings, just to talk about how things are going, what their experience is. We have customer service surveys that we send out. So it gives us an opportunity not only to get that feedback through those surveys, but , um, folks can come out and actually talk about things. A, as a big group, we, we had a couple of meetings in this room before it was remodeled, with a permit. Um, and, um, and those worked well. It was, um, our contractors, we got good feedback about the, the opportunity to interact. Our staff asked those questions, um, make suggestions about procedure, um, things that they were experiencing that they thought we could improve more and were things that we hadn't made changes on and that they, uh, they found helpful. So as a part of our process with these, uh, international codes and the adoption, um, we had about 42 pages of amendments. Our intent is to minimize those number of amendments, right? There's a lot of, um, science, there's a lot of effort that goes into there. Um, there are, there are hearings in the next couple of weeks, actually, for the 2024 codes. There are a lot of groups nationwide, um, international groups too, but more so nation, nationwide and nationally that are working on these codes and put these codes together. And it is, um, not only a, a group of stakeholders from the code enforcement side, but also the stakeholders, um, from the industry and National Home Builders Association, other things like that. Um, so, um, I guess I sort of feel like in my experience, the code, the code covers most everything already. It's, it's in the body of the code. There's not a need necessarily for us to be more restrictive than what the code already is. Um, and, um, and the code works well in most jurisdictions and with the exception of a few, most of them adopted as is with just a few administrative amendments or fill in the blanks, right? There are, you know, what's the, the minimum height of a pipe on a roof based on yours anticipated snow load? Um, so we fill, we'll fill in those blanks, we'll make some administrative amendments. Um, but, um, there's not an intent to make the code any more restrictive than it has written. Um, the other thing that we will do, um, as a part of the adoption process that we will bring to the City Council is, um, an adjustment in fee schedules and, and the valuation and the way we do that. And, um, I just want to make clear right up front, we're not, and there's no intent to raise fees, um, other than, um, ancillary fees such as re-inspections or after hour inspections. We had a, um, a, a study that was done in 2019 based on costs and we're charging $50 to go out and do an after hours inspection for an hour and that's not covering our costs. And the study said about $78 to do that. And that was back in 2019, that's certainly gone up a little bit. So the, there would be, um, a proposal to change a couple of those sort of fees, but the base fees for permits and other things, there's no intent to, to raise the fees by, um, appropriately applying the valuations where we don't need to raise our fees. So I'll try and go through this fairly quickly. So in, in the adoption process, some of the big things that, um, will come before you as a part of this process, residential sprinklers, right? That's been a topic of conversation for 15 years, um, as the code started to incorporate that. Most jurisdictions, not all, but most jurisdictions will, um, eliminate that, they will amend that out. Um, and I will propose that we do the same thing. Think that if we, um, follow a lot of the other requirements within the code for separation of garages from homes with fire rated drywall, other things like that, that we, uh, we provide a sufficient level of protection without that additional cost, especially as we're looking at affordable housing right now and, and rising housing costs. I'm certain that, um, the folks from South Metro will like to talk to you about why there is value in that and there is value in that, but it also is an added cost.
Is there a way to perhaps incentivize it? You know, to say, hey, if you include, you know, in a residential new build, the fee can be reduced by a certain amount to, you know, maybe not required, but incentivize it in the code?
There are certainly options for that. That's, that's things that this body could consider.
Can I answer that question?
Uh, we typically, Anthony Bell is, I'm the Fire Marshal for South Metro. Thank you for having me tonight. We typically are the entity to. Uh, we're typically the entity to issue the permits for residential sprinkler systems. And so we've incentivized that, um, through our district for, gosh, probably about 15 years. And, um, if the residential structure is less than 6,000 square feet, the permit is only a hundred dollars. Um, once you exceed the 6,000 square feet, then we do a, a, a square foot, uh, adjustment to that. Um, so that's one way we incentivize, um, having residential sprinklers in the more, um, average sized homes. We've tried to actually give money away, uh, for about the same period of time, about 10 years. We gave tax rebates. If somebody voluntarily installed residential sprinklers, we gave them, um, uh, three years of tax rebates. Um, and we only had one person in like 10 years take us up on that. So, um, it was about a thousand to $1,500 back, um, that we credited them, so.
Yeah, I mean, I understand they're expensive to install. I don't know, I'll try to figure out how to get people to want to do it, voluntarily spend more money.
Yeah, sure.
Forty-two hundred dollars average?
No, that's the energy code upgrades.
Oh, that's, okay.
What would you say in average? My first system is about $3.
Two to $4 a square foot.
Uh, it, it's a, it's kind of a hidden art, but, uh, we're seeing about $2.85, $2.85
cents to anywhere from there to $6 a square foot. It just depends on the, the industry and the demand and those types of.
That's on a new bill, not a new, not a retrofit.
Correct. Yeah, retrofit is a, a little bit more.
Thanks. Thank you. Um, we already talked about removing the valuation tables from the amendments. Um, one of the things that will be in the new codes in the 2021 is the electrical, these charging stations. So that's something we will, um, as I said before, we'll recommend that we don't make amendments to the code. Code, um, energy conservation code, just, um, maintain the changes between our 2012 current code and the 21 and promote more consistent enforcement. Our enforcement has been, um, a little inconsistent at times, um, in terms of energy code. We kind of ebb and flow on that. Um, and, and most jurisdictions are pretty consistent with that. We, we hope to do the same as we move to the 2021. It's a good time to, um, change our process and procedure as we're changing the code. Um, and it's, and it's, well, it's a change for us, it's not that big a change for, um, our customers because they've been experiencing that in other jurisdictions. Um, in the codes, there is, um, an appendix for, um, tiny homes and we will propose that we adopt that. The state is currently, I was part of a meeting a couple of weeks ago and will be, um, part of some future meetings where the state is talking about putting in place, um, regulations related to tiny homes and how to define them and, and how to, um, permit and inspect them. And, um, they're anticipating something going to the legislature sometime in the middle of next summer. But, um, and of course that honestly will probably take another year or two after that as it goes through the legislature and works its way through. But in the meantime, there are, um, some regulations related to tiny homes within the IRC and I will propose that we adopt those so that if we get requests for tiny homes, we're able to address that in a consistent way until the state comes up with some sort of regulation. Will that include ADUs? No. ADUs, um, I think we will keep ADU separate and just look at those under the ULUC. Um, it gives, it starts to get a little complicated if they say, I want to bring in a tiny home and use it as an ADU. And I think, you know, right now I can say that we want to keep those separate. And that is the intent initially, but, um, it, that may change as we start to look at that. And, um, all, all of this tiny home ADU, STR, sort, and in, in the ULUC and in the I codes, it starts to get really complicated. There's a lot of, um, a lot of times where a particular situation sounds the same, but it's not based on square footage, location on the property, other things like that. So I think we're going to kind of have to feel our way through that a little bit, start off with a plan and then modify that plan as we go. And as it becomes more popular and more requested, we'll make some adjustments to that.
This is more for like the development of tiny homes, right?
Correct.
Yes.
In this case, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are more tiny homes that are on wheels. They're mobile as opposed to an ADU.
ADU could be on wheels too.
It could, but not how we have it in the ULUC right now, so.
Right, so those are the things we'll have to figure out is because the I codes don't really talk about whether it's on wheels or not, but ULUC does. So we'll kind of have to feel our way through that as we go. Um, and then we already talked about adding the international existing building code. So I will propose that. So questions related to all of this information?
Yeah, I do have a question. Thanks, Tom.
Sure.
Uh, on the, uh, uh, all these changes, how is customer service going to be improved? Cause it often calls that council will get is how the developer or someone who has a developer trying to get work done. How Littleton is always difficult to deal with. It seems like Littleton is the most difficult to deal with, I'm told. How is this going to help customer service?
Well, I think, um, in, in a couple of ways. So we've been working on, um, putting everything into Tracket. And that, um, assists our customers, um, because they're accustomed to using Tracket in other jurisdictions. They're used to working off of the 2021 or 18, maybe sometimes the 15, but mostly the 18 codes now. And so part of where they run into problems is we're inconsistent in terms of our application of code and our code requirements with other jurisdictions. As we go through this process of adopting the 21s, we'll update all of our information that's out there, um, on our website. So we'll have better information on our website, our processes are more clearly defined, um, they're more consistent with other jurisdictions. All of that will translate into improved customer service. It'll feel more comfortable and easy for our contractors.
Any questions?
One last one, and this might be to create a remark with regards to city charter and going through this process every three years so we don't slip again for an extended period of time. Is there something that we can potentially talk about including into our city charter, into our own city code to be able to kind of, uh, proactively adopt or at least start the process of revision of new and adopted codes every, on a consistent basis to conform with the ICC?
Well, if you want that charter, that's a terrible one.
Yeah. In terms of how, you know, how does one instigate it other than it coming back to council to be then?
I think just a, like I was gonna say, every three years, we're gonna take a look at this.
And I would say that sometimes with the building codes, there, especially with new ones, kind of a new version that comes out, there is some strategy sometimes to see how another jurisdiction, uh, adopts it and the issues that they run into so that we kind of use them as, as getting pigs. But yeah, to kind of Jerry's point, it is kind of just staying on task and, you know, we don't want to fall behind by, you know, several iterations because it makes it even more difficult to understand what's changed from 12 to 15 to 18 to 21, um, just for our own inspectors, so.
Yeah, and the changes end up compounding more and more often. So missing one iteration is twice as difficult for a lot of contractors and developers.
With, with our contractors and the market who are, you know, have their own challenges when they go from one jurisdiction who's on the 21s and they come back here on the, on the 2012. So it's probably from the customer service standpoint, um, for our contractors, it'd be great if we had a little bit more uniformity within kind of the Denver metro area. So we just need to stay on task.
Yeah, I think what I'd add to that is, um, yeah, somebody said discipline here. I think it's, um, on the part of staff here to put that in the cycle of all the other kinds of codes we shouldn't be staying on top of and not wait every 12 years to update something like this.
Or 40.
Yeah, I mean, it is amongst the other plans that we will need to update on a regular basis and some of it is much more specific to our city, for example, like the ULUC or the Complan. But these codes generally are obviously created outside of us and can be easily tied to cyclical adoptions without necessarily approval processes having to be instigated, so.
Yeah, missing one cycle is maybe a little unforgiving, I guess, but waiting 12 years is, there's no excuse for that. So the other thought I had, of course, is tying it to the performance appraisal of the city attorney. That would be my other.
I mean, if you're aiming for consistency or.
They talk at Metro Mayor's about asking municipalities to stay within the last two. It's like local passage, you know, that, that policy is going to be broken.
You know, and it also has an effect on insurance rates for homes and then things like that. So you know, that's built under some ancient codes, then, uh, you know, an insurer may look onto that a little bit less favorably than if you had one of the more kind of safety minded codes adopted. So it's always a factor for our residents as well.
Sure.
I was just going to, my point of trying to take it out of council's hands to approve essentially rather than, uh, normalization of adoption and revision thereof.
I'll put it in the city managers.
Just put it in our outlook calendars.
The one thing I would.
Send you a reminder in three years.
The process for the 2024 codes is underway and, um, we do have staff that, um, is now participating on a regular basis in, um, some of the local chapters related to the code and they will start attending those hearings, um, for the 2024. So we're already, even though we're in this process, we're already kind of talking about the 2024's suggested changes. And so, um, honestly, we'll get this adopted by the end. And, and so, um, honestly, we'll get this adopted by the end of the year. And next year, we probably will already start kind of thinking about the twenty twenty-four, um, because it's, it typically will, the rough drafts will start to come out in late twenty-three from those committees. So we'll already be on track for the twenty-four and we're already thinking about that.
It's updating of the IBC as well as the fine tunings that we're doing with the ULUC are all part of that goal, a good governance and kind of that continuous code improvement. So, um, we have already identified with the adoption of the twenty-one codes, we're seeing some consistency issues with what's in the ULUC. So kind of at the end of this year, you'll see another slate come before you that addresses those inconsistencies. So we're in a good pattern now of being able to update these, their living documents, the IBC as well as the ULUC.
Well, I hope if there's any other questions, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so next up we have, uh, really discussion about the ownership of South Platte Renewal.
Yes, Mayor, we're gonna need a couple of minutes as we load our presentation onto the laptop, so we could just take a quick break here.
Take a five minute break?
Take a five minute break.
Yeah.
Uh, item B on this new session tonight is the South Platte Renewal Ownership and Management Principles. Uh, this stems from the previous council, uh, with the whole council discussion or just a couple of council members that asked to bring it back?
The Mass Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, so that we investigate this issue and bring it back to this council.
Turn it over.
Yeah, so, um, I'll turn it over to Keith Reister here and our consultant. Let me add a little bit more background here. So obviously, one of the, um, larger utilities that the city owns is a cone ownership with the City of Inglewood. Has a long history. In fact, I'm, I'm not sure exactly when the plant was constructed, early eighties, late seventies, late seventies. So this ownership has been in play here for quite some time. And, you know, over time, we certainly have looked at improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. And I think it caught the attention of the Mass Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, just the, the sheer financial responsibility, if not liability, for the wastewater treatment plant based on what we see coming down from the state. And certainly in my own career, you know, the state and EPA have been imposing more and more regulations on wastewater. No surprise. So I think that's why, uh, we were just questioning, is this the best model today? We've never really answered or talked about this issue here since the plant was originally constructed. So we've, um, uh, contracted with Jason Mumm. We'll, we'll do a little introduction about himself here in just a second to basically put together kind of this white paper on, what are the options here for the City of Littleton as we look at the ownership of the wastewater treatment plant? So with that backdrop, Keith, you, Keith Reister, our Public Works Utilities Director, you may want to add a little bit to that.
Pretty your backdrop up there. So Keith Reister, Public Works and Utilities Director. So Jason's here with FCS Group, um, he'll introduce himself. We also have Peter Van Rye, the, uh, Director of South Platte Renewal and Inglewood's Utilities as well to answer any questions along the way. So, you know, Mark gave a really good synopsis of how we got here. Jason's got a good experience in, um, in this and that's why we asked him to prepare these materials. As well, I, I want to, Mark and I, so in the current model, um, as you, as you probably know, that each council approves, um, a budget for the plant each year. But, um, the actual oversight of the plant is done by the supervisory committee, which is the two city managers and the two public works directors. And we meet monthly and go through all the, you know, contracts, purchasing, all those kind of things, uh, each and every month. And, um, with the staff over there and, and I'm, I'm gonna just speak from my perspective. In my four years here with the city, um, you know, we have seen a, as an owner, we have seen a significant transformation in, uh, the confidence level. I would say the confidence level I have in where we're going at South Platte Renewal. You know, for a long time, there was, um, not a lot of great capital planning. There wasn't a lot of planned and preventative maintenance and that's completely changed. And that's a direct re- uh, direct result of Peter and his staff over there. He's got a great team. And so I feel much more confident in the numbers and the information and the status we have with the plan and where we're going. And we're gonna talk about this in a little more detail, the technology of the plant in our next presentation. But I, I have a lot more confidence as where we were a few years ago. And so it's a completely different situation than when I first sat on the supervisory committee, I think. Mark had a similar experience, um, with his background in this business as well. So, um, with that, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Jason and he's gonna kind of run through where we are, what options are, what ownership looks like and, and, you know, see, see where that discussion goes.
Great, thank you. I'm Jason Mumm, nice to be here tonight. Thanks for having me. Uh, just real quick on my background, um, twenty-six years doing this kind of work with many, many, uh, front range utilities. Water and wastewater almost exclusively for the twenty-six years, twenty-six years, all of it in the front range. I'm a Colorado native, born and raised in Den- born in Denver, raised in Canyon City, Colorado, so came from that place. What I was asked to do here was to just look at different alternatives that the city could potentially have if it wished to transition its ownership away from what it has now with its agreements with Littleton and towards something else. And so the, the big, uh, ask for me was what are those something else's that are out there? And then on a very large level, a conceptual level, what do they look like? And how, how sort more or less feasible are they just, just from a, a first blush kind of look? Uh, I think you'll see from my report, uh, I did do a little bit of financial diving in this. Um, and that financial deep dive is what I'm pretty much well known for in the area. We go very deep into, into that when we develop rates and charges for our, uh, for our clients. But in this case, what we were doing is trying to keep things at a very high level here and not exhaustive at all. I think what you'll see in these alternatives is even with the ones that we're presenting here, you could conceive of multiple permutations inside of each one where you could toggle certain things on and off, carve certain things in or out of these kinds of arrangements. And we didn't go to that extent. Didn't think we needed to, to give you the information that you needed. If you're interested in following up on any of these things, obviously, um, we can do that. But, uh, for tonight, really just a discussion of just top level, what do these, what do these options look like? So with that in mind, I'm gonna get to the presentation, um, and just kind of go through this with you. Basically, this was my mission. That was given to me by Mark and, and his team was tell us what our options are. If we were to transition ownership from South Platte Renewal to one that's gonna reduce our financial obligations and our inherent business and regulatory risks, that actually says a lot because, uh, what Mark was saying in his introduction is true. There's really nothing, there's, there's almost no industry that I've been able to find yet that's more capital intensive than a sewer utility. Um, and I've actually researched this. So you can, you can go down the Fortune five hundred, you can go down the S and P five hundred. It's gonna be really hard to find one that requires more investment in physical assets to earn one dollar in revenue than a sewer utility. Very hard. And it would surprise you if you went and did that same research. I mean, big oil companies don't even come close to what it costs to run a, a sewer utility. So there's a, there's a very inherent financial obligation that comes with owning these utilities. And increasingly, uh, we're seeing much more stringent, um, requirements on water quality that hit this industry very hard. We long ago passed what I like to call the bend of, the bend in the curve where you start reaching diminishing marginal returns on every dollar you invest in regulatory needs. That is to say, the first part, back in the seventies when this plant was built, to reach those water quality standards that were put out there by EPA, actually, you got a lot done for less investment. Now, we're getting, we're tightening it down more and more and more because guess what? We can measure things that we never were able to measure before, parts per billion, parts per trillion, that we never could do before. And that's probably a good thing overall, but we, but what you should understand is that in order to get to that last increment of water quality is costing exponentially more than it did in the past. And that's what you have in front of you. The South Platte Renewal, no different than any other wastewater utility in the entire world, or the entire country at least, under this regulatory umbrella in the United States. All of them are facing this, all of them. So you're, you're not special in that regard, but, um, but that's, that's the objective here is to see, is there some other way that we could manage this ownership structure where maybe those risks, maybe those upcoming liabilities, maybe that, that those expenditures aren't on the city's balance sheet, but somebody else's? And what would that look like? Well, we came up with at least six that we can talk about tonight. Uh, four of them are, are really similar because they involve some kind of form of special district that would be formed, uh, to take over some, some or all of the operations, depending on which one of these configurations we're talking about. I did include, I did look into, into two others. One would be some kind of merger with, I called it in my report, Metro, uh, Wastewater Reclamation District, because that's what I've always known it as for as long as I've been alive. And it, and between the time I wrote the report and tonight, they changed their name. So, um, so they're, they're this, they're the Met, what are they, Metro Water, Water Recovery, right? I think that's right.
I think so, yeah.
Oh, okay, I got it here on the presentation, good for me. And then the last one I looked at was potentially a sale to a private party, um, which, uh, has some interesting features to it. So I'll get to each of these. Just real quick on the, the ownership and contractual layout, I sometimes fancy myself an artist. That's, that's orig- I got an NFP for this. That's all. You guys can bid on that if you want. I've got it on out there on OpenSea, you can get it. But that's mine.
I didn't see NFTs as an option for, you know.
NFTs, well, you never know. Just, uh, go out there and make some bids and maybe we can do it. So this, all this is meant to show you is, is who, who are we working with right now? Well, Inglewood's our partner, our partner. We're the owners, the two of us together of the South Platte Renewal and its, its related facilities. Inglewood is the managing agency. We s- we, the two, uh, owners serve a number of communities by contract. Um, and those are, those are shown in the little circles that go around the outside there. There's a couple of districts that actually are served by both. We don't need to really get into those kinds of details, but this kind of gives you the lay of the land about what's involved here. And that'll come into play here as we're talking about some of these alternatives. It actually took me longer to make that little piece of art than to describe it. All right. I'm gonna talk for a minute here about forming special districts because four of these alternatives would involve this. And, and you'll see that in the report. So what does it take to form a special district? Well, uh, step number one is the filing of a service plan. What that's gonna involve is defining a service area boundary that is gonna be the limits of the district that you have in mind and then describing what the services are going to be that are gonna be offered inside of there. Some of that is pretty straightforward. It sounds straightforward, but, you know, my experience is that filing these service plans is actually a pretty big task. So you gotta go out there and get this, get this done. And once you have it put together, you gotta go out and start getting, uh, county commission approval. County commission for all counties in which that boundary touches, all right? So, so you could have more than one. And that's kind of important because each one of these commissions is gonna have their say over whether or not the, this district can exist the way that you have it laid out in your service plan. Once that's done, it moves on to court approval, uh, at the district court level. They're gonna review it, they're gonna make sure that everything's taken care of. One of the things that, that happens during that is there's, there's a review of all these intergovernmental agreements that you have to. these intergovernmental agreements that you have to rely on either to, either to receive goods and materials and services to provide the service or to those that you're providing service to. So for example, those contracted districts, if they're going to remain contracted districts, that's one of the intergovernmental agreements that the court would need to review. During this court approval process, the property owners who are in that service area boundary can petition for being excluded from it. And so there's that process that's, that happens at the same time. And then ultimately, once this, once these approvals happen, there has to be an election. So you got a lot of steps to go through to get this done. The election, of course, would be in the entire boundaries of the district that you have in mind. So some, again, if you've got multiple counties involved, you have multiple residents, different jurisdictions, different, different makeup. So like I said, four of these alternatives all involve this process. I was hoping we could just get that one picture out of the way so that you could know that each one of these four would involve this to a greater extent. As you, as we go down the list, they become more and more difficult to do just because of the number of jurisdictions involved. So let's take a look at, I think, what is the easiest one of the four district alternatives? And that's forming a special district that would be really Littleton only. So it wouldn't involve directly the districts. The district boundaries here would include the Littleton corporate limits, more or less. It would assign all of Littleton's interests in the, in South Platte Renew to the new district. An interesting feature for you to be aware of in that, in your agreements with all of these districts that you serve is that Littleton does have the explicit right in those contracts to assign its interest to a district or service authorities. It's mentioned specifically in there. The districts, however, do not have the right to assign their interest to anybody, which is kind of nice. So in other words, this is something you could do contractually, you don't have to ask anybody. Assignment is specifically allowed in your district agreements, I just mentioned that. So what I did with each of these is I tried to rate them about, you know, how well they would perform under a few different categories. I'll go through this one a little more slowly and then the other ones will, will kind of make more sense as we go through it. But one is, would it transfer the assets the way that you would like? In this case, that's definitely true. The asset, what you would be doing is basically setting up another entity to take over the balance sheet that is currently owned by the city of Littleton. Literally, it's going to be a transfer from A to B. Everything in that balance sheet would come with it. All of the assets, all of the liabilities in the district would then therefore take on all of the future obligations. So all of those things would happen relatively straightforward in that regard. So I've got the first three there. That's the transfer of assets, transfer liabilities, transfers of future obligations. So those three objectives are met pretty well with this, with this alternative. Would it result in any cash flow to Littleton? This would be as a result of changing the ownership structure. And I rated that low because I don't see very much there, all right? So one of the things that communities look at when they're trying to do something like this is how much of the, how much cash can we get in exchange from that? Or how much of the cash we currently have can we just keep and then repurpose for something else? And I think what you need to be aware of is that the cash that is being held by Littleton right now in its enterprise fund for sewer really needs to follow the purpose for which it was recovered in the first place. Now, there is a little bit of money in there that is in a restricted reserve. There's $3 million that was set aside for this rate stabilization that arguably could be retained by, by the city, but you know, arguably, maybe, maybe not. But there wasn't much there, so that's why I rated that, that pretty low. The impact on Littleton ratepayers, the four means it's pretty good. Would there be an increase of any kind that results from this? You know, all else being equal, there, there wouldn't be anything, but there are going to be some organizational costs here that would have to be incurred and it involves creating the district on one hand and then transitioning some of the city's management functions to it. So there's, there's probably some costs there that are going to have to be picked up. That would be above and beyond and different than anything that you're currently looking at right now. So there probably is something there, although I don't consider it to be a very large impact. Time to implement. This will probably be the faster of the ones that we're looking at here because it only involves you. You, you, you would go and set this district up, the city would be in charge of that. The corporate limits are the limits of the district. You would only have to deal with the, I can't remember how many counties it was. I think it might be just, maybe it's two for this one. Sorry. You'd have to get the, the fewest number of commission approvals of the, of the ones we're looking at. And, and I thought, I felt like the time for this was probably the fastest of those. So that 26 in the bottom corner there, that's the sum of those things. I'd use these to help compare them to one another. So the ones with the higher scores tend to be a little bit better, ones with the lower scores tend to be a little bit worse. Conclusion that you get out of this, Littleton's out of the sewer business. This gets transferred to a new district. All the assets and liabilities go to the new district with the least number of approvals. I said, like I said, the cash should follow its intended use. There's about 21 million, based on the audit that I looked at for, you know, 21.6 million based on the audit that I had when I wrote this report. I think most, if not all of that, would have to go with the new district because probably that money is sitting there, having been recovered to pay for capital projects at SPR or in your, in your collection system. So retaining it to do something else with it would just mean that you're going to have to probably increase rates or borrow more money, or the new district will have to do this to just do the same things that the money had already been collected for in the past. So that's alternative A in a nutshell.
So you're saying 3 million possibly could be recouped from that 21?
Maybe, yeah. So it's, it's listed as a restricted reserve and it's, I think it says that it's a rate stabilization account that you have. So it wasn't, to me, it wasn't pegged towards a capital project or for anything like that. It was just meant to be there as a, like a buffer. And so that's why I felt like possibly it could be retained. Let's talk about alternative B. These will start going faster. So alternative B would be a little bit bigger vision. This would include Littleton plus its districts. So all the pink circles that were on the side of your, of your chart there. What this would do is it would regionalize Littleton's interest in SPR among yourselves, your, your own residents and those of the districts that you serve. And so the district boundaries would include all of those districts as well as yours. And one of the things about this that is somewhat appealing is that the districts, in order to become included in the district, so rather than being served by contract, they would be direct members of, of the district, they would be, they would be included in the district. One of the things that I see in the, the financials right now is that those districts really don't have the same kind of equity into the SPR facilities as Littleton does. That makes sense because they're kind of renters in this game rather than buyers. They haven't ever achieved that level of equity. Now, in order to be included into the district, there's a very good case to be made that all of those districts would have to come up with some money to buy in to this new district. That money would go to Littleton in that event. So could that happen? Sure. Would it happen? Well, obviously you're going to have to have the, the agreement amongst as many of those districts as you could get. That makes it more difficult. I don't know if any of them are interested in that or not. That wasn't part of what I did. I didn't go talk to all of your general managers and figure, you know, try to pick their brain over what their thoughts were on any of these things. And so that would have to be something that was done after the fact here. So what does it do? It gets Littleton out of the sewer business, just like the other one. Transfers all the assets and liabilities, just like the other one. This would include the approval of up to four counties by my count, so much more difficult in terms of the county commission approvals. And I did say that the equity contributions from the districts could benefit Littleton in this event. So this one tended to score a little bit higher because I felt like the cash flow to Littleton, you see that one there? It's a higher rated, higher rated for that reason. So those, those equity buy-in contributions, a portion of that, maybe all of it, would need to come back to Littleton in order to make that work.
And that's just potential, not actual hard dollars.
Yeah, potential, yeah. If they agree, if, if, if there's, there's a lot of contingencies in there.
If they want to cough up the cash. I'd say, I mean, I have.
So, so what I say in my report is they actually may have an interest in doing this because as a, as a member of the district, rather than a contracted, contracted entity, they would potentially get rid of that 20% differential that they're paying on the rate right now. Everyone would be on parity at that point. And they would be part of the governance of the district. So there's, there are things in there that would benefit them, that would be worth them thinking about this. So it's not just a pure money grab type situation at all. It's, there's, there's something in exchange there, there's value in exchange. Time to implement, probably slower just because you got four commissions involved. Before I move on, any other questions about B?
Geographically, what would be some of those commissions?
I've got it in my report, but.
Jennifer Center, Repo and Douglas.
There you go. I should probably.
So yeah, I mean, definitely Repo, definitely Jefferson County, definitely Douglas County for sure.
Do we have some residents that receive Denver water? What about the sewer? Do we have some that was Denver receiving?
All of those folks would be serviced by either us or Englewood or all in any of those districts.
Yeah. That's true.
Do you know, like, if they had the money to opt in or to become part of the district, about how much do you think would come in potentially?
That's a good question. I didn't go to that extent in my report. I did look at their financial situations to see, you know, where they were with their cash positions right now, just to see if there was enough liquidity to even have this discussion. There does seem to be some there. Now, whether that money is sitting there to do something like this or not, that's a different question. I'm just saying that the cash seems to be there for most of them.
Certainly, Jason, I'll add to that. So certainly in our discussions with the districts, which we've done much better recently, is, you know, one of their asks is always, they want to have a say in what the rates are. So in a model like this, our, our control over those rates diminishes greatly because we become one of many. So the, we, any, in these models, in a model like this, we, we, let's, let's say all eight districts come in. That means we're now one of eight votes, we're one of nine votes versus one vote right now. So we, we do not have the same power and rate setting that we currently do.
Good point. So in each of these models that involve regionalizing into these districts, you are going to dilute your governance of the, of, it's just going to come with the territory.
Well, well, with that goes, you also limit your liability.
That's right.
We're, we're on the hook right now.
That's right. Yeah, I mean, there, all of these things are, are trade-offs that you end up making to go to these, these different kinds of organizational structures.
For what exactly? I'm not quite clear on the risk and the liability. I mean, if there's $21 million to fix things or state a code or whatever, if things change in the legislature, like what?
Government mandates, federal government mandates are huge and we've, we've had them over the years and they're very costly. And I don't, I don't think your report went into that at all, but their mandate is going to come down someday that are way beyond what we can probably afford.
So let me intervene here and answer that from a technical perspective a little bit. So, you know, basically, we, we, we are predicting future capital investments as best we can. Right now, we've got, we have extra capacity in the plant, which is helping us stem and push out.
About 50% capacity of it?
No, 32 of 50.
32?
32 million gallons of 50 million gallons.
Is, is, is being used now.
Correct. And that, that is actually allowing us to push off the regulatory investment now because we have room in that capacity to do other things. So we're deferring some of that to the point where we may not have to make that investment in the future. Peter can explain that far better than I can. So.
He's probably doing it to your words, too.
Well, I don't know about that.
Probably not.
Exactly. So, so what happens is, is, and Jerry's correct. So over the years, and, and Mark kind of explained this earlier, is, you know, there, and Jason did, there's, there's continues to be incremental requests of wastewater processors for, to narrow the regulation of what comes out of the tailpipe. And back into the river, you know? So for example, things that are on the radar screen are changing the temperature before it goes back into the river, which we don't do now, as an example, that are, that are coming along the line. And, you know, all of our stuff, okay, no matter what you think, we're downstream from somebody else. So you certainly hope that the people upstream are investing like we are because their water's coming to us and likewise for our users downstream. So that regulatory, it does continue to climb and it does become more technical, but I'm sure as Peter and Jason would tell you, this is actually one of the most dynamic areas out there in terms of technical innovation right now of, of almost any industry. It's, it's pretty amazing how much is going on. So that's kind of that curve there and, and it's not cheap, you know? And, and that we, we lobby on part of that and be part of the regulatory process, but those can change at any time. And, you know, they're vetted publicly through the process, regulatory process, but they can be imposed on us. You know, this plant had a history back in the eighties where when they first opened, they were good enough to have, their smell was so bad, it had political cartoons in the Denver Post. So that was a change that had to take place in investment. So that's where that, that risk is there because it could jump up and all of a sudden we got, you know, twice as much that we have to invest as we are, as we do today. And, and that's what, you know, Jerry's referring to is that risk is definitely there for us to do it.
Yeah. Yeah. And as the owners of the plant, you know, it's incumbent on, on you all to finance that. I mean, you could pass on as, as much of that as you can to the wholesale customers, but ultimately, you know, you got to foot the bill, then recover the costs. It's, it's, it's tough. So this, these organizational structures we're talking about moves that, doesn't move that responsibility from your ratepayers. They're, they're going to pay someone else the bill instead of you. It moves it off of the city's balance sheet. So there's potential benefit for that, but it's not like any of those requirements go away. They're going to still be there, it's just that they're going to be managed by somebody else, different, different organization.
Managed by others who are experts in that field.
Special district.
We have experts in the field management right now.
We also have other people like councils involved that aren't experts in the field.
Special districts have to have boards. So those have a board, so.
Let's talk about a third one. This, this one would involve a special district that would include Littleton and Englewood, the two owners together. The boundaries would include the two corporate limits. It would vest really 100% of the ownership of SPR if this were to go the way it's envisioned here into one new, say, super district that would govern, govern the entire plant. All of the contractual relationships would remain as they are. It would just be all of the ownership interest to be assigned to this new district. Obviously, this is really similar to alternative A. The big difference obviously is that Englewood is involved. Englewood would have, would have to agree, of course, in order to get, get through here. But both Littleton and Englewood are sort of, as cities at least, are out of the sewer business. This gets transferred to a new district and that ends up taking over the governance of the SPR altogether.
Where is Englewood on this now?
Don't know. Didn't ask them. That wasn't really part of it.
We pulled them out in ten, the conversation at least.
They know.
So I, what I say here is Littleton's not likely to benefit more from this than in option A. And it's unknown whether Englewood would have any interest in pursuing it at all. What would make this, why, why even look at this? Well, you know, if, if, if there were an interest in, from Englewood's side in going along with this, then this is a possible outcome. So does it produce any other additional benefits? Actually, a little bit slower, I think, to implement, obviously, because you got to get Englewood on board. There's going to be additional counties involved in the, in the commission's structure approval cycle, so this one.
Englewood on board no matter what.
Not with the first one. I don't think they need to be on board.
For the owners, I think they would, they would probably buy out or.
Yeah, we'd have to go through the IGAs, the 73 IGA, 82 amendment to the IGA, which I don't think there was any language in there that says, hey, we can just say, we're, we're good, we're done, because there's obligations that the city has to continue funding. I mean, we got into that issue several years ago when Englewood was falling behind in, in, in funding.
in, in funding their capital portion. So there are obligations on the city. So I think even in option A, it would most likely require some consent on the part of the city of Englewood, or we could base litigation as a breach of our...
And Jason, your report, though, didn't you say that the IGA's also don't limit us from doing that?
Yeah. I mean, I just, that might, that's just a plain reading of the agreement on my part, so your legal advice needs to come from that guy right there, not me.
So I'm taking that liability.
Uh, special district all in. So this is sort of like the super district idea. This is taking the whole ball of wax, throwing it into one giant district, which would manage it all, kind of like the One Ring, right? Get that joke? I'm full of these, okay? I'm here all week, folks. So, uh, so this one, you know, these become progressively, I think, a little bit more difficult because of the number of approvals that are needed to get it done in terms of timeline. In terms of whether or not you're, you're doing what you wanted to do, or at least what I was asked to look at, getting sort of out of the sewer business, all, all of these do that for you. I think that where they differ is on those last three criteria, cash flow coming to Littleton. In this case, this one's very similar to B in that all of these districts that you have out there, you know, my, my sense is that many of them have some interest in the governance of what's going on here, and would like to have that level of control. In exchange for that, though, there has to be a discussion about the level of equity that, there's a disparity there that would need to be addressed. And in order to bring them in as, as, as included in the district, rather than just being contracted, I think there would legitimately need to be a discussion about how much money they need to come to the table with. And so would there be cash flow to Littleton in this? I, I think that's highly possible. It would also be the case for Englewood as well, I believe. And that, that all depends on how well those negotiations would go. So, impact on Littleton ratepayers, I feel like this is very good, in, in, in as much as you could get some cash flows out of this because of those equity buy-ins. Time to implement, slow. Nobody asked me to look at this. I just put this in here because it seemed like, you know, one of the things that you might actually be wondering about. And so I thought I'd put it in here so we could just talk about it real quick. But it turns out that this kind of thing probably isn't all that feasible just for the financial hurdles that it presents. You know, Metro is probably the right, if you were looking at a merger of any kind with another entity, that's probably the one to look at in terms of scale and scope of operations. Uh, you know, they're probably the only one really in the neighborhood that would work. Plus, there's facilities, mains, trunks nearby that would, would allow for some interconnection with some additional investment. It seems sort of physically feasible that this could occur. Financially, maybe not so much. So I, I described this in my report, but I did call Metro, I actually didn't tell them about Littleton specifically, but I just asked them the general question, like, if I were, if I wanted to become a special connector tomorrow, what would be involved? And, uh, you know, to confirm what I felt like I already knew. First of all, we need to talk about paying our connection charge. That's like, number one. Well, connection charge is set by their port, and, you know, it's not very much per equivalent unit, but it just so happens that at 32 NGD of flows, you have a lot of equivalent units. I reasoned that, uh, that Littleton's number of equivalent units alone is about 106,000 equivalent units, about, that would come to $482 million just for Littleton to buy into the system. If it included Englewood, which I'm saying in this option, it almost certainly would need to include Englewood, we'd be looking at $1 billion. There would potentially be some offsets.
We got any more questions?
So, so just to give you a sense, the offsets would be the contributions in kind. That's your plan, and all of that, all of that that goes with it. Without doing a detailed valuation of that, I reasoned that that could perhaps be about a $400 million contribution or something in that range. It still leaves a lot of money, guys, just too much to even really think about. So, um, does this even make sense? The other thing to think about is, it doesn't even really get you totally out of the sewer business, because Metro is not gonna take on your collection systems at all. That's not something they do. So you're gonna have to keep doing that, keep doing the billing. So that's just gonna be there.
We get a fee for that?
Well, you can continue to charge rates for that, sure, yeah.
I think that's roughly what Dominion was gonna pay, too.
Tell us later, Ray.
So the last one I looked at was potentially, could, could you just sell this entire concern to a private party? And, um, there's, there's firms out there, companies out there that want to buy these concessions. I just spoke to another one today, they're constantly calling me because they, they wanna network with me, in case, wanna recommend them to their clients. The answer's 100% no. But I did talk with them, it was a nice conversation. They're out in the business trying to buy these concerns from cities and districts all over the country. So it happens. A lot of times, when I've talked with other clients before about this, the idea is that we're gonna get this really big windfall of money, because they're gonna pay full market value for our, our, our assets. Um, you know, we're gonna take that money and we're gonna use it for all kinds of great things. And there's actually examples of this, that, where that has actually happened. What they never tell you in that is that, that, nothing is for free, all right? If a private company comes in and pays an acquisition premium above and beyond the value of the assets that you have, there's only one place that that's gonna be recovered, and that's from your ratepayers. So what happens at that point, private company, Public Utilities Commission is now in charge of approving all of your rates. And what they're going to come up with is a, is a program where that acquisition premium's going to be recovered from your ratepayers over some timeframe. Could be short, could be long, it's gonna be whatever the PUC tells them. But it's definitely gonna come from your ratepayers. So, yes, it could result in cash flow to Littleton. In fact, I reasoned in my report that there's reason to believe you could see a fairly substantial acquisition premium in, in this kind of transaction. But, again, you need to think about what the impact of that's gonna be on the ratepayers on the back end of it, because they're the ones who are gonna end up paying for all that, eventually. So, uh, the other thing to think about in this is that there's, I feel like there's almost no opportunity there if you're just selling Littleton's interest. Because what that does is it puts a private company as a minority owner in a joint partnership with Englewood as, as the other owner. So in order for a private company to really care about this, Englewood would absolutely, in my view, they'd almost absolutely have to be in agreement and also be a willing co-seller in this. And, uh, like, like I said before, I really don't know if they have any interest in that whatsoever. That would have to be discussed with them at some other point. So is this, uh, is this feasible? Well, the companies are out there, they do this. They have the capital. And so that part of it is feasible. Is Englewood on board? Don't know. So maybe, maybe not. Would it be feasible for the ratepayers? Probably not, because, you know, their, their rates are almost certainly gonna go up. And, and by the way, once it gets to the PUC for approval, you, your, your decision-making authority in anything that has to do with rates and charges are otherwise is gone. You, you just don't have anything to do with it at all. You can intervene in the PUC cases, you can make your case there, but you'll do it at great expense. You're gonna be hiring attorneys to do that, file briefings on your behalf, and, and go that route. So that's what's involved there. Just a real quick look at how these all stacked up with my, my, I admit, these are my personal rating schemes, it's all based on my opinion. Your opinions may vary, this is what I came up with. I felt like, uh, alternative B, if you really are looking at these, is most likely the one that I would lean towards if I were you. And again, what that one was is, you form a special district that would include you and potentially your connecting districts as one district. And that would be the situation where you'd be going to those districts saying, hey, if you wanna be part of the governance of this new utility, uh, this new water and sewer district, then we're gonna need some equity contributions from you to level things out here. That's where you would get that additional cash flow bump, potentially. But as Keith pointed out, and I think it's important to keep in mind, really all of these result in a, a loss of certain amounts of control for you as a council. It transfers that control to a new district. In the case of A, B, C, and D, transfers it to Metro altogether in alternative E, and it transfers it to some private buyer in alternative F. So that's, that's what you would have to trade off with there. I have to say that the report that I gave you is extremely well-written and well-researched, and has no flaws whatsoever. And I hope you read it, I hope you read it well. It's really quite a good read. But, uh, love to have any questions that you have before I disappear here.
This, I mean, this whole topic kind of reminds me somewhat a little bit of self-Metro player kind of, uh, unification there. And I think with that issue, that, you know, the problem is clearly defined, very explicitly what the problem was with that situation. With this situation, you know, I don't see that problem as clear. You know, one thing I didn't see here is, you know, comparison to the status quo, or what that, you know, what that would look like to, to keep things as they are. Obviously, that wasn't your charge, you said, if you decide to go somewhere else, what to do. I think the number one thing is, you know, Englewood's gonna have to have a say, you know, in all these situations, so that'd be step one, to talk to them. But I think that, you know, the number one thing for me is, you know, the, our, you know, our residents, you know, to have the ability for the, to the control of the governance and control of the rates. I think any of these options probably doesn't do them necessarily all that, all that well. As far as cash flow to Littleton, I don't really see, I mean, there's, is there a lot of money going back to municipalities in this? I don't, I don't really see the huge potential for the city.
It's a separate entity, so everything, everything goes to the plant, right? Yeah, so Littleton gets nothing.
Right, yeah. And so, you know, with all the, kind of, the details in there, every single step with the districts goes to an election. You know, we can get way down this couple of years, and then go to the voters, and they're like, yeah, no, we don't wanna do that. And so I see a lot of, a lot of issues moving forward in a good direction, so, you know, I'm more on, I would love to be out of the sewer industry, but I don't, I think it's a lot more problems than it's worth.
Jason, thanks. Great report. I, I, I'm feeling like we should put this off until I'm done with council. I'd made too many big decisions already, just off of my... But, no, really well done.
Fair point.
Steve, I'd like to hear your perspective, just given your background and expertise.
Um, your report was really well laid out. I think the, and your charge was looking at this from a, really a financial perspective, and, and like an ease of, an ease of ability, which is also, makes an impact on the finances. But I think there's a, a, a lot of questions brought up about governance and, and planning, which I think are as much of drivers as the ultim, ultimately in terms of how the finances are actually structured. And, um, I think we do need to kind of talk out, you know, what are the ramifications and scenarios of the dispersed governance model by bringing in both Englewood and their special districts, as well as Littleton specials, Littleton's special districts as well. But when we're talking about, like, how much we were, how much a special district could recover to do, for example, a single capital project, the larger the pool that we have to buy in, the bigger the projects that we can tackle. And the cut, there, there is a certainty that the cost of construction and the cost of these capital projects will always be going up. So the smaller the special district we have, ultimately the smaller the pool that we can pull from to actually take on these capital projects. Yes, we do lose some ability when the governance is dispersed like that, but then again, we also have all these contracted services. They're not gonna be able to put their wastewater anywhere else. Like, they're always going to have to go through the same set of pipes, they're not gonna build a new plant somewhere else. That means that we are also tied to their growth and their development as well. And in a shared governance model, we actually have some control and some ability to have a discussion about that. Whereas having these special districts contracted out, we kind of lose that ability to have kind of that shared governance in terms of how we accommodate that growth, and also where we appropriate those capital funds. So we can jointly focus certain areas of our capital improvement on certain major projects. But if we limit the governance to being very small and just only including us, then that is this, and, and we can also then run into the risk of not being able to accomplish what we want in terms of being able to grow sufficiently with our sewer system. And, you know, accommodate the new regulations that are obviously coming down the road, like, we can put that off only for so long. So a special district is kind of essential. Like, I don't think you can ever get away with it. The question is, how long do you wanna take to build the coalition? And how big of a coalition do you wanna spend the money and time to build? You know, are you gonna get every special district to opt in right off the bat? No. Can you get as many as possible in a reasonable amount of time? I think it's well worth a shot. And these other special districts will ultimately probably have to buy into it, or want to buy into it, to have a say in the governance of rates, and where the CIP, or the capital improvement project money and funding and planning goes as well. So...
Could maybe give you a sense. I've been working with the city of Des Moines, Iowa, for last several years. We've been working on regionalizing their drinking water system. Very similar discussion to what we're having here. I started that work in 2017, and it's 2022, and we've finally gotten to the point where we have an IGA that we're putting out there for people to look at and react to. So, so the timeline for getting this done, I mean, if that's any kind of help, it's, it's not short. You know, people have, people take time to get their arms around things, and especially if they haven't really looked at this stuff before, and I think a lot of your districts are in that boat, where, you know, they, they have a limited sort of visibility over all of the goings-on at SPR. As long as their wastewater's getting treated and they're paying what they think is a fair price, they're kind of out at that point. But if they go in to be a regional partner, there's a certain amount of extra responsibility that they take on, they, they wanna get into things, they wanna do their own sense of due diligence to it, and that's what we see in Des Moines. So, something to think about, timeline.
I mean, any regionalization is super challenging.
Absolutely.
It is. I mean, and it's also really personal, you'd be surprised when just talking about wastewater treatment, how personal it can really get with, with these regionalization projects, especially with these small districts. And like I said, it's not gonna be like everyone comes on board at the same time, or even in the same way, or with the same degree of governance, or the same responsibilities. It's all gonna be pretty unique. But at the same time, we know for sure that the Denver metro region is growing. It's not going to be growing evenly. The cost of construction is always going to be going up, and it'll go up quickly. And the larger the pool that we have to work with, the more we can do with it. And quite honestly, the more equitable it is to all those ratepayers. Being a contracted, uh, ratepayer versus someone who has a governing position, like, that's a huge difference. And I wouldn't want to be, I wouldn't wanna, at first blush, be putting someone in that position to say, you're, you're a contracted entity, you and your people don't have a say in how this gets structured, or how it gets planned, or how it gets financed in the future. So, I say we go big and just walk slowly.
I think this is way too big. I'm sure.
Um, I don't know if it's a Keith question or a Mark question, but this is gonna take five years. I think we kind of understand the advantages that were outlined in some of the, you know, financial implications. What do you think about capacity? I mean, it, it, looking at staff time and how much this would take, and what it takes away from the other things that we're supposed to be doing, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think from my view, when Jason talks about walking slow, I think if the council had interest, I, I would suggest that we certainly share this with the city of Englewood. They're aware. I think we would probably want to engage them in some conversation about what do they think? Do they see something here that's worth talking about? I think at the same time, we probably need to engage the special districts, at least keep them informed. I think there are some who are a little more sophisticated than others, just because of size and complexity of their systems. So, you know, I, I share it with them and see what thoughts they have. I think you have to take it slow. So as far as capacity of our organization to kind of take this on, we don't have much. So I think we even have to engage, you know, somebody like Jason or something to kind of help us manage a conversation. Maybe in the, the initial conversations, we can do that internally, but if this starts to get any kind of legs on it, we're, we're gonna quickly need support for this. We just, we just don't have, we only have one, Keith.
Just remember, Keith, if we get out of the sewer business, I'm gonna come and ask you for five plow drivers. At a minimum. Those, those guys all plow, they'll be out plowing when it starts snowing, so they're our second shift. So, you know, in reality, we all come and ask you for... So, you know, in reality, we all come and ask you for people. There's no way around it. So.
Yeah, maybe you don't have a thought. Just, you know, I haven't been involved in saying things like Jason when he talks about the city of Des Moines, but I have been involved in assembling special districts for some other purpose. It is slow. It's a long conversation. So this is likely to take years. But, you know, is there merit behind that conversation? Could be. You, you just don't know until you start engaging people, but it's, it is definitely a slow process.
The other, the other part of this too, and you touched on this, Steve, is that, you know, we're talking about four or five counties here. And when we start talking about limiting some other county's growth, that's going to be a very challenging conversation when you start sitting down with county commissioners, for example. That, that's, that's one of the constructs of this situation is, you know, which we're going to talk about here in a minute with Dominion in a little bit, kind of contextually. But, you know, all of those other entities, you know, if I'm one of those, if I'm Douglas County and I've got X amount planned of growth over the years in my growth management plan, then, you know, do they see this as a limitation on their ability to succeed from their objectives? So that's, that's going to be part of the conversation beyond the, the special, all the districts that are out there. It's going to be that overarching political because as, as Jason pointed out, all of those county commissions have to say yes to it. And if they don't see this in their economic interest, then, then they, they're not going to be supportive of that discussion. So it's, you know, it's a very intertwined process, no matter what we do, you know, with lots of parties and people. So.
Kelly, did you have something?
I just wanted to know a little bit more. You said things were not so great when you first came on board and it's a lot better now. Can you kind of speak to that?
Sure.
A little bit.
So Keith and I both could.
Generally?
Yeah. I, Mark, can you tell him? Mark, go first.
Yeah, you know, I think it's, you know, there was an opportunity here some years ago to kind of change the management approach to the plant. And this is the previous city manager to Sean Lewis, Eric, can't remember Eric's last name. Yes, thank you. Remember he and I talking about that. And it was certainly one of the goals is to kind of raise the bar. So, you know, I do believe, like Keith stated earlier, I think with the hire of Peter and the changes that have happened, that plant is in a better position than I have seen it since I've been here. I think the, the planning around just the operational efficiency definitely has improved. When we talk about the capital planning and what we can and try to manage over time, yes, the extra capacity of the plant has helped us in that regard. But I think that with kind of Peter's guidance, they have a pretty sound capital plan to minimize the cost upfront and allow us time for technology to kind of hopefully catch up and provide some solutions that just don't exist today. Now Keith's right, that the technology behind wastewater is changing at a rate that is just unparalleled in other industries. It's, I think that's why you have engineers who specialize in this because it is fascinating work, believe it or not. So, yeah, I think that today, South Platte Renew is just in a much better position here financially.
Yeah. You know, I'm in Kyle's camp. I don't see an issue with it right now. And I, I think this is a fascinating report and it's good, I think, frankly, to put it on the shelf and let it sit for a long time. But we're in a great position. You know, we spent $4 million with, with Inglewood, getting that flare off gas, converting that into XL. That's going to, what, eight, 10 more years? We're going to start, that's start, you're going to start recouping our company.
It's already profitable.
It's probably about four and a half.
Four and a half years. So we'll start now making money on those rim credits. So we talk about, you know, being able to afford updates to the plant. We also, I think are still considering maybe, or Sterling Ranch is still considering coming on board, which helped, would help with capacity to Steve's part. So I think we're in a fantastic position and frankly, to bring this on staff or anybody else right now, when, when, I don't see a reason for it is, is not really of interest to me.
I can see the conversation needs to continue though, because I, I think over time sewer plants are complicated critters in the first place. And, and like our fire department did eventually move it, it's similar, it's, well, it's not a perfect match, but it is similar, where it just made sense to have to do that for expense-wise and for service-wise. I can see where sewer plants, this isn't an unusual thing, I'm taking it across the country, that are coming just more districts. Is that, is that a true statement?
I don't know. More regionalized, is that what you mean?
Yes.
You know, one of the things with the sewer industry that's remarkably better than the drinking water industry is that they tend to be more regionalized just by, just by nature. So for example, there are approximately 55,000 drinking water utilities in the United States. There's only about 16,000 wastewater points of treatment work. So it tells you a little bit about how regionalized they are to begin with. But yeah, there's, I would say that I have several of my clients who are very concerned about the future of the regulatory environment and they're looking at, not necessarily looking at making a quick move one way or the other, but let's just say that they're exploring some options.
And that's what we've been told over the years is that there's some mandates that could be coming down sometime. And we're, and we're talking not millions of dollars, but we're talking possibly billions of dollars in that changes.
Industry-wide, it's in the hundreds of billions.
Right. And that, that's, that's why I think it's important that we keep this conversation going as a district. And Inglewood needs to be a part of this conversation, obviously, as well as the, our other folks out there. And the, and the people who don't live in the city of Littleton, but they are our customers, I believe they pay a higher fee now, don't they? 20%.
Yeah.
They may, they do may be interested in this conversation.
Okay.
There's some people that are saying status quo. Some make a case for moving forward. What if we did some preliminary talks and see what, I mean, Jerry makes a point not to just put the report on the shelf, but just preliminary talks to see what our partners are thinking? And that may stop us or that may help continue the conversation.
Doing it without Inglewood, it may be very difficult.
Right. I mean, and I, I'm thinking, seeing where Inglewood stands is kind of like a decision tree. If they say, hmm, consider it, then maybe go to the districts and then come back and reevaluate. I, I don't want to make extra work for staff, but maybe we need to do a little bit of the status quo and a little bit of moving forward. That's my suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, that makes, makes sense to me, just to leave the message. And things right there, you know, hey, this is a great idea. We've been thinking about it too, but haven't said anything. I have a feeling the conversation will get back.
And the environment could always change. That exponential could just be going way up where we're being forced to and we have some, it's something that we're thinking about and we're kind of up on it. It's just.
Yeah. I mean, we're not talking about changing the regionality of the, of the, but the governance of the district. It's actually governed and who's part of that governance process there. So.
That's my recommendation.
Gretchen, have you, I haven't heard from you.
I'm a social worker.
You're a councilman now.
Yeah, sure. Let's talk to Inglewood. I don't think conversations hurt, right? Talking to folks doesn't hurt. I don't think that would hurt any strategic plan we might have or move forward on this and just get more information and.
It's not going to happen fast anyway.
Yeah.
And it may stop.
Sure.
They may. Or, or.
Since I'm going to be the one doing the discussions, you know, obviously we'll talk to Inglewood. So we'll already, we already planned to follow up with the districts, our districts, not Inglewood's districts. I would say that in order to have a quality discussion with the districts, we need to have an understanding of what we would be asking of them financially. Because I already know that the districts, since the day I got here, Pat's retired now, but from the day I got here, you know, they would like to have, the two things they ask us for, they like to have a little more communication with us on the rate structure. And they wanted us to not be all over the map when it comes to rate increases, which we had a history of doing. They'd rather have us, just let's work on a long-term rate structure, which is that the rate study we just did, they were part of that discussion because that helps them for their customers. But I think in order to facilitate that discussion with them, there's a huge difference between going to a district and saying, it's 2 million or it's 50 million. And I think we need to have some semblance of understanding what that buy-in is going to be. Because of course, a district's going to want to say, yes, I'd love to have more control in the governance. But we also need to be able to tell them at some level, what, what do you got to pay to play? And I think we're going to need to do some of that research prior to those discussions with the district. I mean, we'll talk to them as a follow-up to this, but I think we need to do some of that research in order to have a valid conversation with them. So there's going to, there's going to be some of that work. I mean, obviously we'll, we're going to talk, we'll talk to Inglewood and we already planned to talk to the districts. So we plan to do that. So I think that's a step that we're going to have to take in order to facilitate a quality discussion either way.
Well, Keith, if you had to do that, if we have to go, before we have these discussions, we have to go a step further. How much time does that take of you and how much do we have to spend hiring a consultant to kind of get more information? I mean, are we just?
The only way that research is going to happen is if we outsource it.
Of course.
Plus, we're going to go to someone like Jason who has the expertise in that area in terms of rates and inequities and all those things.
If we give direction to continue the process, how much are we talking about? Sure.
Can I make a suggestion here? What Keith and I have, the conversation with the city of Inglewood, their city manager and utilities manager, let's, let's see where that goes. Then we can look at trying to estimate the time and costs that would hire somebody like Jason to kind of flesh up a next step. I, I would agree with Keith's point. If you really want to engage the special districts, they're going to need a little bit more understanding of what this really means financially to them.
Does it also increase their liability too if they come in?
Yeah. So if, like right now, if we have 50% of the risk, we would be spreading, you know, 50, that 50% over the other shareholders in essence, is what we can do.
Basically what Steve was saying.
And we can report out as time progresses for Keith likely will.
June 2nd would be a perfect time to start this.
In the past, Inglewood has struggled and we had to go after them for their share of some funds. But what was, for the folks that don't know about that, why don't we share a little bit about that? Because Inglewood was struggling and they are our partner.
Right. Yeah. This, this goes back to what I was sharing earlier, that the predecessor manager and I were talking through the issue and I was becoming concerned as part of the supervisory committee about Inglewood's commitment to meeting their financial obligation for the plant. And so I sent a letter. I don't even remember what year that was anymore.
It's 18.
Year ago. So, yeah, the letter was rather pointed. It's a dark, disturbing day. Basically serving notice that, you know, we're paying attention and that we're going to defend our interests here and making sure that the city of Inglewood performed. Well, along comes Peter. And I was hired by the city and I think this is where things started to change. In fact, I asked Peter to kind of respond to the, you know, basically a status report on all the issues that I had raised in that 2018 letter prior to a joint meeting with the two councils. And so they have rectified the problem. They have changed their approach and are a full partner again. And I don't think we're, based on my understanding of where things are at, and I don't think there is a risk as we saw back, you know, in 2018.
So there's always a, as people change.
That's correct.
It can always be another risk again.
Correct.
You're Debbie Towner.
Well, I. I mean, it's a good point in the sense that currently there are two parties that currently share this risk, but by moving this into a separately legal entity, essentially we are not necessarily absolving ourselves of that risk, but we are, you know, disassociating it in a sense. And, and for those reasons too, like to your point, like when one party is falling down, like, I mean, you know, we can say, you know, shame on you and sue you and all that kind of stuff, but then you start seeing that there are physical. Exactly. Now I'm talking somebody's language. But there, there are also like implications to the operations and maintenance and management of these facilities and these systems and the physical infrastructure there that can fall by the wayside, especially if they're caught up in these legal battles. Like if, if it is just two parties and one is suing the other, like it, it really harms all of us, honestly. We are tied together whether we like it or not.
And when, when we were having some issues with the plant, and, and I mentioned councils that don't know much about sewer plants, whereas a district would have people on their boards that know something about sewer plants, I would hope anyway.
Maybe.
And you would hope, you would hope. But a part of the problem was, was there were council members that were, that were so disruptive that it was, it was interfering with the staff at the plant.
Another good reason to take it out of our purview, honestly, to take it out of a political purview and put it in a sense of this is the operation, this is a single entity whose sole purpose is to turn poop into the plant.
How many, how many new people will you have to hire?
It's Douglas, no flowers.
That's right.
I mean, there's still liabilities with the district and if they, there's still financial risk with them, you know, fall into the wrong way and it goes right back onto the repairers.
Do your thing. And report back out.
When do you think this might be? I mean, is this something that takes like a month or two or six months? I'm just curious.
Yeah. You know, I think I'd try to schedule something with Inglewood here within, you know, the next few weeks.
Okay.
Obviously like to share the report and I'm pretty confident they already have it, but give them an opportunity to redo that and sit down and talk about what does it mean? And so you're going to report back in a month.
The utilities director's on hand, so I know he's seen.
Yeah. He's aware.
He's aware.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
With all this wastewater talk, do you want to take a break before we start again?
Yeah. Well, thanks, Jason.
It's going to be great.
Yeah.
It was a very thorough.
So much.
Time for the tables to hold.
Time for the tables to hold.
But.
I think it's great.
So currently Dominion purchased the Roxboro wastewater treatment plant some time ago. And our plan has always been to put a new, so this will be scraped, there won't be any ugly green algae thing. Um, this will be scraped, a new MBR wastewater treatment plant at this location. And ironically, we've been, you've been spending a lot of time talking about wastewater. The purpose and intent of this for Dominion is access to our return flows. So, believe it or not, everybody's downstream of a wastewater treatment plant. We all drink return flows, whether we want to admit it or not. Um, and so the, the purpose and intent of what we're trying to do is to have a discharge somewhere in this location for our new wastewater treatment plant and to have a river to intake at somewhere in this location. Such that we can do indirect potable reuse, capture those return flows and bring them back into our system. Um, also just kind of a, a high level, so we've been working closely with Corolo. So Corolo has been helping us through a conceptual preliminary design effort. And this is, um, and it's paused right now because there's a couple of different things going on. And so Dominion, um, while I mentioned, has always been looking at constructing a wastewater treatment plant at this facility. We have taken, um, I guess advantage of, if you will, for a lack of a better term. Uh, we've submitted a proposal to Douglas County in joint partnership with Castle Rock and Plum Creek Water Reclamation Authority to do a regional solution, uh, for the Santa Fe corridor, so within our service area. And so the, the purpose of that regional solution is to help connect communities like Sedalia and Leveres and other existing communities that are on failing septic tanks and help clean up the contamination that is going into Plum Creek and ultimately Chatfield Reservoir, which is either a drinking water supply for some or a recreational supply for others or both, right? And so that is our primary purpose. And so at this time, the size of the facility is, is going to vary. It could be just what we need, or it could be larger to serve that corridor area. And as we've gone through this process, as Keith mentioned, our, our plan has changed some. And so we're looking to convey, while we're gonna treat liquids at this location, we would like to continue to convey our solids to the South Platte Renew facility through the existing, um, Forest Main, um, through the connection that we have, connection agreement that we have with Littleton and a separate agreement with Roxboro. Um, so this is just kind of a, just some preliminary sketches that, um, Corolo has been working on for us, you know, different alternatives. Um, there's currently overflow at this existing, so this is the Roxboro lift station. And so there's, oh, that's what that, this is, is overflow. So if there's an upset at that lift station, they would have somewhere to put that wastewater, such that it's not discharging raw sewage to the river and Chatfield Reservoir. Um, this is another layout that Corolo has been looking at for us that would consider still having an overflow for the station, but making it underground. Um, and putting in likely additional generators, et cetera, at that location. So this-
How many acres did you say?
Uh, of our service area?
Yes.
No, no, of the plant.
Oh. Uh, total, so this is a four MGD site layout, um, that we're looking at, and that would be to include that region. So for Sterling Ranch, so the great thing about MBR technology is that it can be, you can grow into it, right? So you, you can start with a point eight facility and then you can grow to a one point two and you can kind of add on each of those trains, um, as you grow.
I see.
And so what these facilities are looking for is, um, we would build the, the concrete, right? The structural pieces of that and then allow to phase in as we grow into our service area.
As your capacity changes, I mean, cause you're, you're gonna be near capacity.
So currently, and I'm sorry, I should have backed up. So currently, all our wastewater goes to South Platte Renew. So today, we don't, we do not operate, we don't run this plant. It's scary if you wanna do a Halloween, like, talk show, I mean, it's, it's, it's scary. We don't run the plant. Um, all our wastewater goes, is conveyed through the O-line that we, um, have capacity in with an agreement with Roxboro to this, that force, or the lift station, sorry, um, and then into the Forest Main, which again, we have an agreement with Roxboro and Littleton, um, to provide that.
We refer to that as the Roxboro Interceptor. That was one of the first things Mark gave me when I got here.
So again, how many acres?
The acres of the plant site.
Oh, Josh-
Six and a half.
Six and a half?
How's that relate to Peter's, uh, how many acres you have out there?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three?
A much smaller facility, we're not looking this far.
Yeah, gives me an idea of maybe not.
And, and the other thing, the other reason why, you know, we've taken a little bit of a pause on the design of this facility is, you know, this, this relooking at our agreement with Littleton and looking at, is there potential that we could, sorry, I feel a sneeze coming on, suffice, explosively sneeze, I apologize. Um, uh, we're, we're looking to, to determine if we can continue to convey the solids to, um, South Platte Renew for handling and treatment, or if we need to pivot and look at doing solids handling at our facility in site. Cause that's gonna change somewhat of the configuration and, and how much we could do at this location.
Yeah, cause originally it was a temporary solution and now it seems to be working out well.
That's right. So this is just a real simple schematic, um, that we pulled together. So the top is what's currently occurring and current means, um, at buildout. So these numbers for, for Dominion would be at full buildout. That is not currently what you're seeing today. Um, and then the, the bar, the, below the dark black line is what we're proposing to do. So currently, again, we share conveyance through that Roxboro Interceptor, or what did you call it, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Good. Good. Um, currently, we share that capacity. So Roxboro conveys, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day. Um, Dominion, uh, conveys at buildout, it would be eight hundred thousand. Um, and so that would be a total combined flow in that conveyance interceptor of one point five five million gallons a day. So what we're proposing to do is again, Roxboro is gonna continue to convey their wastewater to South Platte Renew for treatment. So that seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day remains. And Roxboro is not really growing, right? They, they're, they're pretty confined to their growth area. And then we would handle or treat the liquids at our new wastewater treatment plant. Uh, but we would convey the solids through that line. So that would drop that eight hundred to two hundred and fifty. So there would be one MGD total coming through South Platte Renew. Cause there's some liquid stream in solids, it's not, you know, solid, right? This is just another schematic to, to look at this. So currently, this is, again, the top is what's current, the bottom is what we're proposing. And so-
Current, now or current later, which current are you talking about now?
Current now.
Current now, okay.
So wastewater comes from Roxboro, the Roxboro Water Sanitation District into the O-line. Wastewater comes from Sterling Ranch, cause, so this is today. Wastewater comes from Sterling Ranch into the O-line. Again, we share that conveyance. It goes into the splitter box here, because at some point, there was that Roxboro wastewater treatment plant.
That splitter box.
And, and that water goes to, all the way, is conveyed all the way to South Platte Renew. To note, there is the Lockheed Martin facility. And I'm sure, I don't know if this is, if council is aware of this, but Lockheed has talked off and on about expanding that facility and adding additional flow. And so in the Roxboro Interceptor agreement, there is reserved capacity for that flow. So what we're talking about doing is again, this would continue, right? All the Roxboro flow would continue to come through the O-line. Sterling Ranch flow and future, you know, other, say Leveres, Sedalia, other, um, developments that come online in our service area would come through this connection. They would hit the splitter box, but here downstream of that, those flows would then be offset to our new Chatfield Basin Water Reclamation Facility. So the flows would come, would go through our MBR plant. The solids would come off and go back into the Roxboro Interceptor and be conveyed to South Platte Renew for treatment. I kept arguing myself really simple, that's all I got.
That's a great chart, yeah, that, that really is a good chart.
So in, in, if, if, so there is, um, uh, there is a benefit us, for us operationally to have more solids coming to the plant, technically speaking. Peter can explain that if you would like.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think it- Um, so the benefit is we have infrastructure, so there's excess capacity within the facility.
TV, you should say who you are.
Oh, sorry, Peter Van Rye, Director of South Platte Renew. And, um, I live in Englewood, I'm here tonight visiting. Um, but we have, uh, we have excess capacity in the facility. So there, there's a significant amount of, there was a significant investment done in the two thousand and six, two thousand and eight timeframe, built out the capacity. So as we, um, as we bring in more solids or more flow, it, it goes back to that discussion from earlier, but it creates more contributors, contributors in terms of funds, contributors in terms of, um, operational costs, things like that. And so it utilizes that infrastructure that we have that is there today to, you know, to, it's somewhat redundant. So it just, is utilizing infrastructure that's been invested in to help.
What capacity are we at right now, Peter, are we pretty low, forty percent?
Our average flow runs around just under twenty.
Twenty, okay.
Our hydraulic capacity is fifty. And so our regulatory complac- capacity is around thirty-four. That's, that's what, that's our state regulatory, there's, there's a lot that goes into this. Um, but essentially, we, we average around just under twenty. And so as we, so we have a lot of room to bring in more flow. So that's, that's the one thing that, that the plant has is capacity. And the more we can bring more flow in, the more you get the economy to scale by bringing in, you know, you, you spread across, spread the costs and the response, the, um, financial liability across other, more, more users.
Is there an efficiency point, like eighty percent? I mean, if we're only operating at thirty to fifty percent, is eighty percent like, and I just picked a number there, but is there efficiency?
Well, it, it, so, there's a, there's a maximum point where we start to diminish efficiency. We are efficient in how we utilize the, the, um, infrastructure today. So we, we, we utilize it in a way that maximizes efficiency. One of the things that we actually have, and which is actually a luxury from a wastewater plant perspective, is we have the ability to absorb upsets. So we have a, a, the ability to, if something starts to go wrong, because we have this excess capacity, we have the ability to, um-
Reroute.
To, yeah, to, to manage that in a way that other, other entities, other wastewater facilities who are at ninety percent capacity, if they start to see some kind of an upset, they don't have that luxury of being able to help manage that, so it's-
They also don't have the luxury of keeping that up that's not being used.
So, I'm sorry, say that again.
But, but if you're say fifty percent and you're still maintaining a hundred percent.
That's, that's absolutely right. And so we, we cycle things through in a way that, if, if anything, it extends the useful life. So.
Okay, I'm, I'm not clear, why, why do we wanna do this if we have capacity? Why would we wanna build something or-
Well, us, sure not building anything.
We're building it. So you're building- I'm not asking for anything except to be able to convey my solids.
So, so what is it, so, I'm confused. What, what do you, what kind of, what information are you asking from us? Are you asking directions or just everything?
They can, uh, keep sending their solids to us and also increase what they send over the future.
Right, so. So what, so they're a connector district for us, so they're not, they're not in our service area. So they connect to us and that's the Roxboro line, right? Somebody got disneys, pass it. And so, um, uh, since we have an existing agreement with Dominion that we, we kind of have to renew anyway, um, so we are here to get concurrence that, that we should work with Dominion under this new conceptual model to negotiate a new agreement with them. And it would come to you, cause it's an IGA, and, you know, build a rate structure around that that's appropriate for their use. And, um, cause the original agreement really contemplated, you know, a short-term amount of growth and then they would move to their own facility. But their plans have changed, so this is a different model. And they wanna work with us as, you know, their downstream plant to, to make, to find a way. If we, if we said no, then they gotta go a completely different direction, so.
Which will bring us into the other discussion. Where's the end of this?
Yeah, I think, uh, just to share my perspective here, and I appreciate the conversations we've had with Andrea and over the last several months, over a year now, I guess. I think, um, they wanted to make sure in this discussion here, that the council was aware of this. So as we go further into the conversation, this comes back to you're aware and comfortable. The second piece of this thing, um, is really not related so much to the operation of the sewer, South Platte Renew or even their operation. To me, the, the secondary issue is if we do this and we'll, they are looking to expand their service to Sedalia and other, other areas of Douglas County, it's gonna facilitate growth. The question is how much? From the sewer perspective, this is easy, in my opinion. Plant has capacity, we all benefit from it as rate payers. And so that issue to me is we should be engaging them and looking to move forward. The question though is what kind of growth are we gonna see as a result of that over time? And whether or not we should engage the county commissioners of Douglas County to say, well, okay, if this is your goal as well, you wanna obviously correct some of the septic tanks, maybe even facilitate growth along some of these service areas. What are you gonna do to help mitigate some of the traffic problems as they come down Santa Fe into Littleton? So I think that is where the conversation with the county commissioners of Douglas County is, okay. What can, what can we do to partner, uh, along some of those potential improvements? Well, Maryland Santa Fe, to me, is one of the obvious ones. We know that Douglas County is looking obviously at approving, uh, Santa Fe. In fact, I'm not sure exactly where they're at in that project here, but, um, you know, we've seen the plans where they're going to make, you know, three lanes each direction and that transition happens just, uh, south of Maryland Santa Fe. So we know that they're anticipating more traffic. So to me, it's worth the conversation with the county commissioner. What can we do, what can you do to assist us to manage the impacts of growth?
That was, that was one of our drivers for RP, RPEL on this section of the road, because there was a PEL completed north of our section and south of our section on this Douglas County stretch, but this entire gap in the middle wasn't. So it was important to us to go through this process so we can look at that entire corridor all the way down into Douglas County and all the way up into Douglas. So that was part of our goal in that process as well, to have a better understanding of that, all of the transportation impacts that could potentially be out there.
Yeah, I mean, cause you look at full buildout of Sterling Ranch, thirty thousand residents?
So Sterling Ranch currently has fifteen hundred homes. I mean, if you do the Douglas County math, there's three-ish people in a home. And, uh, the ultimate buildout will be twelve thousand and fifty. Now to, that's, and that's Sterling. Um, also, I think just, there's some recognition, right? Like where my service area is, you've got Santa Fe, you've got the river. And so when we talk development in that particular area, it's really gonna be light industrial, commercial type development. I mean, it's not gonna be, um, another Sterling Ranch. And, and quite honestly, even within my service area, there's not capacity for another Sterling Ranch. I mean, there will not be another twelve thousand and fifty unit development, multi-planning. That, that type of development is not, that doesn't exist up there. And the other limiting factor, I mean, so it's not just to, to mitigate the ease of like unbridled growth. The other mitigating factor is that, the reality of the situation is there's only so much water to go around. Um, and so that's gonna also start to limit what that looks like in that, uh, service area.
The other piece I would add here is, you know, I think Keith has created a, a really good working relationship with the Public Works or Road and Bridge of Douglas County here. So they're obviously participating with us on county line. Uh, we have regional conversations of, you know, through our tip process and the state. So I think we do have a good relationship with them. I think this is, in my opinion, just worth the conversation about supporting us when we're looking for federal money, if nothing else, to build some of the infrastructure we're after.
Okay, question, so what's the rationale from going from your initial plan of having your own treatment plant to having a personal treatment plant to do just the, the liquids?
Economies of scale, quite, quite honestly. I mean, again, there is, you know, as, as Peter mentioned and as Keith has mentioned, right? There is the capacity of South Platte Renew. There is a benefit to have the solids be conveyed to South Platte Renew. And so recognizing that, um, I mean, most of the, uh, intensive, if you will, land requirements for a wastewater treatment plant is the solids handling. And so if we're looking at putting the largest facility we can within that acreage of property that we have, it would be, um, more economical to send that, the solids down, continue to be treated at South Platte Renew. Now, if that, like, like I said, if that is not an option, then we will have to pivot and look at handling solids at our facility, which then would shrink down what we could actually do for a wastewater treatment plant.
So would that limit the capacity and would the capacity still reach the, uh, built-out of Sterling Ranch? If you had to do it all on your, on that?
Yes, it could limit potential other users.
Other users, but not-
Like Sedalian, potentially.
I, you know, I'm all in favor of this, I think it makes a lot of sense, not only for Dominion, but also for Littleton. And, um, so I'm, uh, I'm on board moving forward the conversation.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to moving forward the conversation, but it seems to me that we're almost looking like promoting growth or inhibiting growth to some extent. And we have competing interests. We have many citizens who don't want more traffic. We have many citizens that want more housing. We have many developers that want to build more. So I think what we're talking about has to do with our attitude towards growth and how we want to help or inhibit that.
Not necessarily, because they'll just build it if we don't wanna do this plant. So they'll just build themselves.
Who, the developers build their own plant?
Dominion. So, so nothing changes, the development's still gonna happen.
It's gonna happen.
With or without disagreement.
That's right. But you just said that if you have to do one type of plant, we have to do it yourself, that limits agreement, that limits your capacity.
It can, it could potentially limit the full, what we could fully serve. It will not limit Sterling Ranch. There will be thirty-six thousand people in Sterling Ranch.
What about some of these other communities like Leveres who wants to stay their little, you know, two-point town?
And, and then, and that's certainly possible, so then they can continue to utilize, they're under a state order for an open loo.
That's cool order.
So they could continue to use that and continue to leach contaminants into Plum Creek and into Chatfield. Or we can help solve the problem. And development will continue, to, to be clear, I don't control development. I'm a wholesale water and sewer provider, I don't have any say-
They can't grow without water.
Over development, they can't grow without water. The other thing is, is that, with our regional solution, what's going to happen along the corridor is development will occur, but it will occur on groundwater and septic.
And that's opposed to us, because-
Exactly, as opposed to, uh, renewable water source that protects the aquifer for everyone, as well as a working regional wastewater treatment plant with, um, the operator would be Plum Creek Water Reclamation Authority. I mean, these are people that do this in the business, so there, there would no longer be that leaching of contaminants from those septic tanks and leach fields into Plum Creek. That growth will occur regardless of what we do.
And there's another additional benefit to this kind of setup in terms of splitting the flow, solids going one direction, liquids, liquids going the other direction, is essentially that now they are gonna be also on the forefront of doing water re, non-potable, uh, water reuse. Whereas the hope, I, sorry, not to speak for South Platte or anything like that, but the hope is that we can propose something similar for ourselves in the future, but non-potable reuse extending those reclaimed water lines out from a centralized facility all the way to the end of the service district is financially almost inconceivable. Um, so having smaller plants like this that are actually intercepting some of those liquids and redoing it and re-putting it onto the site is honestly just less distance for that waste and that water to travel. And economically speaking, I'm assuming that's gonna make sense for us in the long run too, as we hopefully move in that direction. Sorry, not to promise anything on your behalf.
Environmentally speaking too, it's better?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And these MBR plants, like, or membrane bioreactor plants can be, um, essentially, they can be upsized and downscaled as development comes online. Or honestly, as water, um, water conservation practices start coming into new building codes, they can also upsize and downsize the plants much easier and that's better for these smaller facilities.
Let's talk about some litigation.
I'm sure we'll get to that eventually, don't we?
I might make a suggestion, it's that, um, you know, as a follow-up to this discussion, um, we can, myself and, um, Jen Henninger, we can work with our counterparts at Douglas County, perhaps, um, kind of give council a kind of sense of what's down there and what their future plans are from a, you know, a growth perspective, since it's, it's probably been a while since we've done that. So, uh, we'll work with them to see what we can do. Maybe we can, you know, bring that back in a memo initially or something like that. Um, so we can just fill in some of the, the gap there, so everybody's knowledgeable, well, what's gonna, what's currently proposed, um, you know, basically south of, you know, the light rail station down there.
And, and Keith, there is some information within the, the regional wastewater plant, um, proposal that we submitted for ARPA monies to Douglas County. So that was based on a Diamondback study that the county had initiated in twenty fifteen and had furthered in, uh, twenty seventeen and completed. And so as part of that study, they estimated that the growth in that area would be about six thousand single-family residents. So that, that's, that's the growth that we're talking about again. Half of Sterling would go, so ten percent of my service area has the majority of my growth and the remaining ninety percent of my service area will have half of what's gonna be in that footprint. And that's what we're designing for.
So are you looking for direction today, what are we doing?
Yeah, they need direction.
What I was gonna say is, you know, before we, you know, I, I think there's at least four people that are saying, you know, let's move forward with this, but, you know, this, realize this is more than them just sending solids to us. They're gonna be sending people and cars. I think this is a good kind of-
Bargaining chip.
Yeah, bargaining chip to say, hey, how are we gonna work with?
Cause it's gonna happen.
You help us and we'll help you.
If we don't use it as a bargaining chip.
It's, it's a no-brainer to me. Yeah, I'm sure the Douglas County Commissioner would welcome a conversation about how to manage growth. It's not no growth or all growth, it's just how, let's have our eyes wide open here as we look at issues like this and let's see what we can do to kind of manage it most effectively. And from an environmental standpoint, what Dominion is proposing to me is just right on target. Um, I just think we just need to take it a little bit further with the county commissioners of Douglas County.
We can convince them to dickson light rail all the way down, all the way down to our-
And pay for it.
Um, so do you guys feel like you have direction?
I think we do.
Any other last questions or?
Drive, if you haven't driven down Santa Fe south, do it.
They're going four lanes, by the way, there are three lanes until you get to Leveres and then it goes to, to both directions.
There's development on both sides of the road, not just on the west side.
Founders Parkway, you know, it's different.
Go drive, take a little drive.
All right. All right, well, everyone enjoying next week off, Gretchen, Jerry and I are gonna be in DC for National League C.
Great time.
I like to refer to it as the national liberal cities, but hey.
They're lovely, that's all right. I got stuck there, that's all right. All right, so we're done.